Good evening, everybody. The City of Keystone Heights City Council meeting is now called to order. Go call, please, Mr. Duke.
Councilman Knight?
Present.
Councilman Lemon-Dusky?
Present.
Councilman Welch?
Here.
And Vice Mayor Husler?
Here.
And for the record, the mayor is traveling and not present today.
I will now move on to the consenting agenda. I will entertain a motion for approval to read a fourteen on the consent agenda.
I'll move that we approve the consent agenda with one amendment, and that has to do with the public information officer contract. It doesn't state any kind of termination conditions, and I'd like to negotiate with the applicant for at least thirty days' notice. Or something that's mutually acceptable.
Yes, sir. I agree. Actually, Rich and I did talk about that, and I'm surprised I didn't have it in there, but we'll get that amended.
Okay. Is there a second? Sir?
Vote.
Aye.
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 And Mr. Vice Mayor, if you can just go back and open for public comment for the regular council meeting.
Sorry.
No, no, no. We didn't have an agenda disjointed. That's I'm looking at probably an older agenda.
Open to public comments? No public comments? Closed to public comments. We'll move now to committee reports.
I'd like to sort the number fifteen.
I know you guys have been sitting in those seats for a long time. I'm going to try and move through the first slides fairly fast. I just want to give you a little events update. So the first slide shows that in 2023, we had four events that I know of. We have seven events last year, and this year we moved to sixteen events. And that's not including the ribbon cuttings that we've added.
Does that include the centennial celebrations?
Yes. I mean, there are multiple events, but yes. I think, and some are, and we'll go through the events that are the remainder of this year. I was going to present this at the last council meeting, but we were slammed, and I opted to save you guys some extra time. So we're going to cover the open mic night that happened on August twenty-second, the twenty-eighth, and through September, and the twenty-eighth and September eighth, we had a coffee and commerce meetings with our local businesses. I'll give an update on that. The Fall Festival is happening this Saturday. Boo on the Boulevard is happening October thirty-first somewhere in there. We are going to have a mural ribbon cutting. We're still finding a date for that. That should be finishing soon. November seventh is the Veterans Breakfast. November eleventh is the Veterans Ceremony that is headed by the American Legion and supported by me. Parade of Trees will be happening November twenty-ninth through December thirty-first. Christmas Market is December thirteenth, which is the same day as the parade. Go to the next slide. We have two wonderful ladies in our community. Barbara Franklin and Rebecca Farmer are coming together to assist in a 2025 Scarecrow Strut decorating contest. Next year, the plan is that I will take that over. And of course, you've seen our wonderful windows. We added to that, too. So our fall feeling will be coming very shortly. The Kiwanis has their Christmas parade. I am not a hundred percent sure. I think they are still planning on having their author blow party. Then the Friends of Keystone is doing their centennial fireworks. I'm going to give a quick update on volunteers. We have a great increase in volunteers, both student volunteers and adult volunteers. Continued efforts to get the word out. We've created a volunteer email, and we are going to start situlating for meetings with the volunteers now that we have the new space. That makes it a little easier for me to have more regular volunteer meetings and work sessions. Some of the volunteers that are going to be coming aboard for Boo on the Boulevard, the Keystone Heights Track Team is going to be helping to volunteer for this next event, for the Fall Festival. The Legacy League Centennial Tip-Off is going to, and has three volunteers, and I'll get more into that, the coaches, and also we have the basketball players from the high school, along with basketball players from colleges around the state of Florida. All will be doing the clinics, which is going to be great. So let's move to coffee and commerce. The turnout has been very good. It is difficult to get all businesses together at one time because the businesses are open. But we're going to try to make them at varying times so everybody has a chance to speak. We have compiled a business email, and we're adding to that regularly. We are working with Catherine Wills, who is our Public Information Officer. She is working with Joel Fletcher, who is our website designer, to create a portal for the businesses, the local businesses. Right now, we have ten businesses in there. The Clay Today, when they do their article, or their advertisement. The businesses are not all up to date. We're hoping that this portal, everybody can opt in, put their information for the businesses. Then that can populate onto our website, and then we can take that spreadsheet from that information and populate that into the Clay Today when we put that anywhere else. And that will solve some of the problems, yes.
We're still paying membership toward the Lake Region Business Association.
Yes, we are.
How are these two working together?
So the Lake Region Business Association is, they are helping us with multiple things. They're helping a sponsorship. They're helping with getting the word out. They're helping with coffee and commerce. They are touching base with me on a regular basis, individually the members and the members as together. I'm not sure exactly, are you talking about, they're not going, they can put their businesses on there, but they're not necessarily assisting in this portal. Each individual business would opt in to the portal, submit their information. We would look at that information and make sure, you know, put it into the website, and then that would populate the spreadsheet.
So any differentiation between businesses that are within the city lots versus?
Their addresses will be on there. And one of the things that came from the coffee and commerce meeting is that it also have a link to Google reviews.
Who attends, who attends the Lake Region Business Association for the city?
Councilman Knight attended their most recent and did a presentation from the city, and we'll basically assess who's available. We'll have a city member or a council member if they wish to attend on the city's behalf. But right now, I see that as the city manager's function unless I'm not available or if a council member wants to attend.
I would just like to make sure this is not an adversarial type of thing.
By no means. It's any of this, everything from coffee and commerce, all of the local organizations, Keystone Lake Region, the Chamber of Commerce, the, any organization, like any tourism. This is the combining of all those resources coming together on multiple levels, either at those meetings for the Keystone Lake Region, LRPP, so forth and so on. The overlap will come together to be able to have a flow of communication for all events and all things.
That sounds good, because I can think of five related organizations. The Chamber of Commerce, the Economic Development Corporation, the one that's in Stark, I can't even remember its name, and then the two here.
Right. And all those resources, I'm trying to link to everyone. Whenever I'm at a meeting, I try to link them to that. Whenever Jamie's at a meeting, he links them to that. So communication has definitely come up. And all the efforts that we are doing to meet the requirements and strategic plan to build commerce and to build communication is working.
The businesses start happening?
Yes, a hundred percent. And we can always pivot. And that's why we have these ongoing conversations, which we didn't have before. So the next meeting, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, but just clue me in here on the portal. What's the function of that?
The function is to populate a business listing on the website, which will ultimately be able to be used when people ask for what local businesses we have to populate the Clay Today when we do our directory and so forth.
Okay, so it benefits the citizens as well.
Benefits to the citizens, benefits to the businesses, benefits to us for communication or things with them. So the next meeting, we're going to try to make October the businesses. At first, we were going to do it quarterly or a year and a half. But we believe the Fall Festival decorations coming up, all the different things coming up for Christmas. We thought it would be beneficial to meet again, so we're working on that date. Next page. Sponsorship is up. That is partly because we just have wonderful organizations, wonderful people, wonderful volunteers, wonderful businesses. A part of that's actually come from Jamie and I getting out there, talking to all these different organizations, talking to the businesses. They've always wanted to come alongside. They just didn't know where they could use their resources. It's not, it's nothing new. Our heart and our town has always been the same. They just know where to direct their, where they want to direct their love and financial support. This is not a all-inclusive list because I'm pretty sure my phone went off while we were having the other meetings. More people are donating, and this is just what we have so far. But it is very.
This is just in the last two weeks?
This is, this is, some of them have been previous to that. WB Beck was for Fourth of July for the ski show. Some of these, most of these have been in the last two to three weeks. And a lot of these go to the basketball tournament, which has to do with Sherri Anthony going and doing a lot of footwork for that. And that's another volunteer that has been given to our community. So we're going to move to the next slide. Open Mic Night has passed. It was very memorable. Some of the highlights was the open mic, the food trucks, the family game zone, which got wet, the photo booth that got wet, and then the wetness. Lots of rain. I did get a lot of appreciation for the fact that I planned an event that brought rain. So hopefully, the Fall Festival will not get rained out. This is what we have planned for the Fall Festival. We have a vendor market, forty-one vendors, eight food vendors, larger than Fourth of July in the last two years. Live music performances from Duball Trio, along with Anna Jade, who is a local performer, and performed at Open Mic Night. Legacy League Centennial Tip-Off. We have Sherri Anthony. We have Sarah, Coach Sarah, and Coach, yeah, I wish I could see. I can't see that far away. But both the head coaches from the high school are all helping. And again, I cannot begin to name all of the student volunteers and all of the college volunteers that we're going to be doing. An elementary clinic, a middle school, junior high clinic, and then a three-on-three tournament. This is hopefully going to lead into a fundraiser potential for the school system next year and the year after. But it will begin with a ribbon cutting for our beautiful courts that are getting used daily and regularly. We're also going to have a mobile virtual reality trailer that has five-dollar and ten-dollar virtual reality. We have Gatorland Ski Team that is fully funded by sponsors. It's going to be a great event. I'm very, very excited about it. So let's move on to Boo on the Boulevard. We have many candy vendors, our candy booths, many game booths, many information booths. We are working on filling up all of our food trucks with a variation of many different treats. We have four right now. We're going to work on six to eight food trucks. We are slated to have live music down by the PNC Bank. And they're going to open up their parking lot for us again. We do have a themed photo booth that will not be sponsored by the Heritage Commission this year, but we do have a church that's willing to do that for us. And I am working with all the local students and teachers and different organizations to have a haunted natural park across the way. So that should be, so the feel of the whole thing will, we're going to work on a map that allows people to know that the flow doesn't start at Dunkin' Donuts. And we're going to have the band at PNC Bank. We'll have the food trucks right here. We'll have this area open with restrooms and eating area, and then the haunted trail will be behind. So hopefully, we'll have a better flow issue this year. But I've been told by people who have done this in the past that it's always been a little difficult to get people to not start at one end. So we're going to work on that. So we'll do the next one, Veterans Breakfast. This is something that the mayor started last year to get out information to our local veterans. One of the things that spurred off of this was being able to have the VA come to, or Veteran Services come to the pavilion once a month. They are now coming to our new space at Magnolia. It was very wonderful this last Wednesday. They came, and there were a couple of visits that lasted a very long time. There were a lot of resources that they need, and they got. The lady, the lovely lady and veteran that served these veterans was very pleased with the space, was so excited. She even bought a piece of artwork on our lunch break to make it even look more homey. It was a wonderful experience seeing the veterans be able to get there easily. We had a blind veteran that was able to get inside much easier than he would have the pavilion. So I'm very thankful for that. And so we'll get more information on the Veterans Breakfast, but General Eifert will be our guest speaker for that event, and we'll have other resources there, too. And that will be the setup that can. So moving on to the Veterans Service, that is going to be a, yes, thank you. So we're going to be working with the American Legion. They will be at the Rotary Circle. The Rotary Circle will be updated by then, so it should be very pretty and beautified by then. Moving on to the Parade of Trees, we're making a slight shift. We're not just having the trees over in the natural park. Those that do not have a brick-and-mortar building can have their trees over at the natural park, and will be there for the tree lighting on the twenty-ninth. But those that have brick-and-mortar, they'll have the opportunity to decorate trees at their facility. And then we'll have a voting contest on that as well. And then on the side note, we will have for the tree lighting, the library is going to come and do ornaments, decorating with the kids. Santa will be there as well. We will have jazz music, just like we did last year, and potentially a food vendor to be able to serve hot coffee, hot cocoa. Yes.
So a few years ago, when we did the tree lighting, the very first event on November twenty-ninth, we timed it with the colored lights along Lawrence Boulevard, all the way down. And so when we turned on our tree over there, we didn't just turn on the tree. We turned on the whole street. Okay? And we didn't have a single colored light up before that.
All right.
And it was quite the impact for those who were there.
I will definitely look into that. I will definitely look into that.
Can we do this where you do like Clark Griswold and National Park? We see you go out and slam.
I like the vision.
If you want to do this, we should do it.
I like the vision. I definitely do. I will definitely look into that. That sounds like a lot of fun. So let's go ahead and move on to the Christmas Market. That's going to be on December thirteenth. That's the same day as the parade. We have already quite a few vendors. I'm looking at restructuring the map to see how I'm going to fit more vendors in because it seems to be the trend that we have more and more.
You know, if we had market stalls in.
I've heard something like that. We should probably discuss that for a few months at a time. I hear you. I hear you. So we are looking, though, to have the tennis courts, if they are finished and completed by the time the Christmas Market is happening, we are looking to have a tennis tournament happening during that Christmas Market. I think that's a great pool. The ski show will not be happening because it is cold.
Yes.
And so we will find other things. The reindeer games were sponsored by the Athletic Association, the Youth Athletic Association. We're looking to have them come back and support that as well. So that completes everything. Is there any questions?
What about Mayor's Ball?
The Mayor's Ball is not one of my events. We have been promoting it. But yes, the Mayor's Ball is, I should have had it probably on the center slide.
Fifteen, you know?
I think it is. And I do have, if anybody wants any flyers for any of those bins, I have extra flyers.
And the glow party, the.
It is happening?
It is. Yeah, but it's not going to be there to be in front of the catch room to. But it will be, yeah, it should, it'll be that night.
So what's exciting about that is that we will have not only a festival all day long, but then we'll transition into the parade and transition into that, and it ends up being a whole day event. So quite wonderful.
So thank you.
You're welcome. I appreciate it, and I love it, so.
Good.
Well, you're having.
Come on, right?
I'm having a blast, and I just, I love our community. I love our businesses. I love every part of what I'm doing, so thank you.
Great job.
It sure was perfect. Thank you, Drew.
Excellent items. We'll now move to the public hearing on the second reading of the Sunrise Estates PUD to PUD ordinance. Mr. Wiggins is here.
You're going to call for a motion to read the title?
So at this point, is there a motion to read ordinance twenty-five dash six oh eight? Like a.
I don't.
Motion's second?
Yes, second.
Okay. Ordinance twenty-five dash six oh eight, ordinance of the City of Keystone Heights, Florida, rezoning the property consisting of approximately thirteen point eight acres, more or less owned by Wiggins Construction Company of North Florida Inc., located off Sunrise Boulevard, and more particularly described in Exhibit A, the legal description, Clay County Parcels, identification number nineteen dash zero eight dash twenty-three dash zero two two five seven eight dash zero zero one dash zero zero. PUD to PUD to create the Sunrise Estates PUD specifically described in Exhibit B, written description and Exhibit C, site plan, and providing findings by the City Council, providing direction for recording and setting an effective date. So at this time, Mr. Vice Chair, or Vice Mayor, would be appropriate to open for public hearing.
We are now opening the Florida public hearing.
We have no registered comments.
And then closing the public hearing, would be appropriate for the council discussion and vote.
Discussion?
You got to close the public hearing.
Oh, I did it. Yeah.
I, I trust our planning and zoning board, they're meeting on June sixteenth. They recommended this. We've already discussed it once. I don't see much, unless there's some new information, much reason to hack that over again.
Yep, and Mr. Wiggins is here, and I think he confirmed that no changes since, or no changes up here. Any questions?
Appreciate you being here. Thanks for being here.
Process question. Rich, this is the second reading?
Yes, this is final adoption, yes.
Okay, so we will vote to adopt tonight or.
Okay, done. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Just, I guess out of curiosity, either you can't give the exact timeframe, but when do you anticipate from adoption? Mr. Wiggins, if you don't mind, when do you anticipate adoption really beginning with the projects and plans? Like timeframe, two, three, four years?
Joe Wiggins, ninety-one Branscombe Road, Speed Fourteen, Green Ghost Springs, Florida. This last year has been kind of weird in the interest rates coming down. So we were kind of waiting. The timing was good, that this was a little bit delayed anyway for us. To be realistic, probably be the first of the year before we can actually start on the project. That's the thing. But once we start, we can, probably take about six months for full development. But during that time, we can allocate with staff, we can start houses, speculative homes during that six months so that they're ready to go pretty much after when we get the development finished. That makes sense.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
I want to tie the motion for approval. So move second. Call for vote? Aye. Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. On the seventeen?
So now move the items on Friends of Keystone Heights, New Year's Eve fireworks.
Deputyals, Friends of Keystone Heights, treasurer and secretary, and whatever else in between.
Jack Voltrius.
Right. Of course, I'm here asking for money. I would like to see if, I mean, I know we've been, we had fireworks, then we don't have fireworks. Now we're working again with Beau, and hopefully, he's going to be the one to help us to have fireworks. So in order for us to have fireworks and stay on budget for everything that we've got going, because we've got the Mayor's Ball, which is on the fifteenth, coming up, and then we'll be doing the fireworks, and then we're doing the spring fling, and then hopefully, we have money to do scholarships. So I'm here to ask if you guys could help us out with the fireworks, if you guys would be willing to help us with the deputies, paying for the deputies. It's going, I'm figuring it's around three hundred dollars. I know it's a, it's considered a holiday, so it's a little bit more. With the spring fling, I believe we paid three hundred for each, plus a ninety-dollar admin fee to CCSO. So I'm guessing it's going to be somewhere around twelve hundred, maybe thirteen in all, I mean, at the most. So I'm just requesting to see if you guys would be willing to help us out.
Well, by chance, we just approved a budget that happens to include enough money to cover that. I think we should do that.
I think it's good. I will entertain a motion to cover up the four officers.
So is four enough? That's a dumb question, but the reason I'm asking this is, I should have brought it up in the video. I didn't have my settings, but I'm talking to Jamie quite a bit privately, and so you guys are going to hear this here if he hasn't shared it separately with you, about kind of juicing some of the advertising to support these events. So in other words, if we do it right, we'll all be in trouble. There won't be any parking. People will be in people's yards. I just want to make sure if, I don't know where you are in that process, but if we start doing like some Google advertising out to zip codes where everybody's iPhone knows about the city website, they got an app and all this stuff. Payback. Do we, will we have, I don't know where you are in that process, because obviously, you know, but do we need more than four deputies? Do we need six? I mean, I'm asking a dumb question, maybe, but.
Drew, before we make, why don't you come up here, cigarette, buy a microphone.
Well, I didn't know what you had talked to her about, so I leaned to the dresser.
That's okay.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
You're good.
I do lean on the staff, but.
And I'm totally prepared for this. Let me just ask you one other question. Because we do want this, this is a free event for the community. So that being maybe a free event might warrant another one, but what?
How many deputies did you calculate? I was back there doing other things. I calculated four. Four would be, four would be sufficient. I believe that it gives them someone up front and three throughout the park. With the numbers that we pull on Fourth of July, that's about round about what we have is four deputies. And then they'll have a supervising deputy as well.
And that is the amount that we, we budgeted for in the security line item in anticipation of this.
Is that in line with previous year? Numbers are close to it?
For the Fourth of July, yes. So if we pull the same numbers as we do for the Fourth of July, which is a lot, then that would be around the same numbers.
Remember, too, in the past, you had OCD raising funds, too, so.
Yes.
I mean, it doesn't always have to all come from the city. I mean, you want to get community involvement as well.
I'm sure.
Does this sister promote?
And we can't, I mean, we have been, we have sponsorship. We don't want to overtap our sponsorship. We have sponsorship areas outside of, that support the city in other ways that could possibly donate as well.
So for me, just to be clear, this isn't about, yes, remember, the funding. I just want to make sure that we give them that funding.
I hear you.
Yeah.
I don't remember what motion we made, but we can just say we're going to cover that cost.
Yeah.
You don't have to say how many deputies.
You don't have to say how many deputies. You really have to say like an up two dollar amount.
So we're saying four at four hundred roughly per deputy, so that's what sixteen hundred. And let's just say we'll allow for two, maybe up to, I don't know, what, twenty, maybe up to twenty-four hundred? If we need extra, you don't have to spend that much. About either a range, like four to six.
And then what's your budget amount?
Seventeen thousand five hundred for the year.
So up to twenty-four hundred, still within by the way.
Yeah. So I move, where did my mind go?
Okay, so there will be a motion to approve the application request from the Friends of Keystone Heights fireworks for New Year's Eve. For up to twenty-four hundred reimbursed, full with invoices, so they make sure you have invoices for that up for security.
I move that we approve that motion as stated, or as read.
I'll say. Call and vote? Aye. Aye. Aye.
I just might add, one of the reasons, and I don't know if this still applies or not, but one of the reasons why we charged a dollar at the gate was because the fire marshal had a limit to the number of people on the beach. And so this is our way to count the number of people. So if you're not going to charge and you make it free, and if it still applies by the fire department, you need to have some way to do the count.
We will still give out wristbands, and we'll count how many we have, because I think the capacity is only two thousand anyway. We just got to figure out where they're going to be, and, you know, and we already have.
Sounds like we got to cover it. Thank you.
So just a quick plug, Mayor's Ball, November fifteenth. All right. Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
The next on the agenda, twenty twenty-five six one twelve, address food trucks. There are motion to read the title.
Motion.
Read by title.
I know that we read by title, only ordinance twenty twenty-five dash six zero nine.
What's it? Six zero nine or six one two? What's it, 609 or 612?
612.
Well, the agenda needs to be updated, but it is 612.
612, right.
So, I'm sorry, there's a motion and second.
Correct.
Ordinance 2025-612, in order to the city of Keystone Heights, Florida, amendment chapter 11 business regulations, article 6 hotels and restaurants, specifically section 11-52, mobile food vending, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing effective data.
This is for clarity, this is the second reading of this also.
Yeah, so you open for public hearing?
I'll open for public hearing.
This is for the food truck.
Todd Beals, 305 County Route 352, I'm just curious, is there, is there any stipulations onto the size of your property, which there was before, I think there was only like one or two properties in town, that you could actually place a food truck on? And I'm just saying, because if we, as our company, wanted to do an event where we wanted to bring in a food truck, do all the organizations fall into where they can do that or not?
So, the new ordinance says that the minimum lot size is, is as set forth in your land development codes, section 17-100, it also has to have parking as set forth in 17-193 and 17-194, unless it's located in the central business district.
So, with that, is there, what's the lot size? And I have parking in line, so does that constitute, does that allow me to do that or is...
No, look at the code, I don't know.
You're asking a great question. I think that's one of the things that we probably need to discuss like in one of our work sessions or something, flesh out, because I think we're, the events are going so well, you talked about it a little bit in your presentation, Drew, and obviously, is it gonna get to a point where we're gonna, you know, we typically do just the script, how, with some ancillary? We're gonna have to really get credit, because we're building these things out, it's gonna be a lot of fun, do you have a concern with a change?
I just, my concern is, is if they're, I'm sorry, my concern is, is if they set a certain size lot.
It's not like it was before, basically it was an acre before, it's not like that, it's, so it's whatever the, your commercial districts are.
Okay.
They made it more user friendly, but I don't...
Yeah, I think the new one is, is less restrictive.
That's...
It makes more sense.
Okay. This one is trying to occur, it's local property owners in the business districts, if they want to do that, they can host the food truck rather than pretty much being just limited to special events here at the city park areas. Just so it's basically...
Be mindful of parking and traffic and things like that.
Okay, alright, thank you guys.
I'm here.
Okay. Appreciate it. Any more public comments? Comments for public comments? You'll give a vote?
Aye.
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 It's bourbon. It's bourbon. Our final business is amendment fiscal year 24-25 CRA budget. Mr. Booth, could you please summarize this action?
Very quickly for the public, if you weren't at the CRA meeting, we are just approving an existing budget, so that within 10 days of the approval, we can take it forward and make sure that Clay County has a copy of that approved budget, that will help us avoid a repeat finding on our audit from the fiscal year 2022 to fiscal year 23, or try to avoid it in the, I'm excuse you, 23, 22 to 23, and avoid it in 24 to 25 audit. And so, that's, that's all we're doing with this action.
So, we're approving the budget that the CRA board previously approved?
That's correct.
Gotcha.
Yep, earlier today.
Gotcha.
Do I have to move it for public comment, Gary?
Does the chair have a motion?
I need a motion to approve. I won't be approved. Or, I have, I make a motion. I move.
Go ahead.
I'll second it then.
A vote?
Aye.
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 I almost forgot the vote.
Mr. Vice Mayor, to clarify your question, you had general public comment at the beginning, that's what we're gonna cover this at.
I didn't know we had to do it each time, just making sure.
Vice Mayor, I did neglect in your version of the agenda to put in our typical councilman report to go around each council member, they'd like to make comments, also city manager report and attorney's report, so we can go through that now.
I'll just double check. I guess I, I enjoyed our coffee with, at the dirty palate, the windows look amazing. I can't believe it's done already, because all I heard was that you cleaned the windows before, and next thing I see it's done. Drew, you do an outstanding job, in case nobody else knows.
Everybody does, I'm just kidding.
It's just been amazing, there's just so much stuff going on, I can't remember anything else, and, thank you, Mr. Commando, for getting me through this, and everybody else, thanks for your patience, and, that's all I have. Next. I have nothing to report, thank you.
Tonight was the Florida League of Cities Dinner in Palacca, we were unable to attend, but we had our stuff. The Board of Directors for the Northeast Florida League of Cities also met, but only the Budget Committee met, to do their budget for the fiscal year, and so, I did not have to attend that because I'm not on the Budget Committee. I think all of us attended the conference, the Florida League of Cities Conference, and I'm gonna go again next year, I learn something new every year, and it's just, there's nothing like it. So, along that line, we have our next meeting scheduled for September 29th, it's a Monday to finalize our budget, but then, according to the calendar, the last time I looked at it, we have another meeting scheduled exactly one week after that, on October 6th, and to me, that didn't make sense. Is that still the schedule?
I did not change that, because that was the published city calendar, so, we could amend that on the 29th, just bring any business on the 29th, and then that next meeting, Councilman, I gotta look at it, if I remember correctly, the next regularly scheduled meeting is in the middle of November for some reason.
Correct. So, we normally have a mid-November meeting, because we normally delete, or we don't have the December meeting, so that kinda straddles the two months.
Okay, so that would coincide with...
So, so if we so decide the 29th, which is actually just a week from Monday, we have a meeting and then we cancel that October 6th, and not meet again until the middle of November.
So, Councilman, maybe under council comments for the next meeting on the 29th, we can include that as agenda item to consider whether or not to post, if you're gonna hold the October meeting. And as long as we don't have anything that was noticed or advertised or noticed, that's usually the only thing that comes up as an issue.
Yeah, every new night, we're...
So, Mr. Booth, would you please put that on the agenda for 29th?
We would. Yes, sir.
You happen to have an update on the child of Moon Tree, because I heard we did many trimmings, saplings, like four or six or something, but I also heard that a couple of them might have died, and so, I'm wondering where we're actually at with child of Moon Tree.
Whoa, oh, alright, good.
So, you're a local plant nerd, I guess. So, essentially, we have about two left right now, out of the eight that I took, so I've got two that have started rooting a bit, so we're working on getting those up into, to a status, it's gonna be a little bit until they're, they're ready to get into propagation status, so.
Okay, so something for you, us as the manager, keep back in your head, where are we gonna plant now? So, start working.
Keep in mind there's sycamores.
I think we need to have that as part of, whenever we do a work session, I'm always trusting about the amount of trees and flowers and things.
Sure.
We need to do that, yeah.
So, again, just keep in mind there's sycamores.
They grow big.
Large trees that drop a lot of leaves, so, beautiful trees in the right spot.
Todd Debbie said they like it in there.
Oh, no.
I was wondering if that's something...
The last thing I'll just add is, I know this is a city event, but there's a car show planned on October 25th at the Anvil Church, right across the street from the high school, and I'm gonna go with that, and I'm just putting it out there.
You're gonna show off with that?
I'm gonna show off my 1941 Cadillac.
Oh, yeah.
Is it limited in your cars?
I don't know, I heard somebody email it, and I don't know if it limits the gas.
Councilman?
So, a couple of things, you probably referenced, that I had discussions with Mr. Booth regarding trying to increase advertising to support all the issues, it is my public opinion, and I think everyone needs to hear it, just for writing purposes, that we have a great financial situation in the city, we have great cooperation on, I think, all the members of the council, I think that would be fair to say, and, just from, from my time of observing this, I think we are entering into what is permanent times and the strongest position possible as a community, and that's my personal opinion as a council member. I also need to say this to the folks here for the local community, you know, yesterday was National Constitution Day, it's kind of one, that's one of those days that's forgotten, I think you probably have to get like an old woman or Rockwell, having to kind of see that, but, you know, we do live in times where it is undeniable that there's a certain segment of people in this country that believe that it is okay, and they're openly advocating killing people that they disagree with. And, you know, I do believe that, and that would encourage us as a council, and all our community organizations, to think seriously about educating, using some of our events, maybe not a specific event, but when we do the fourth or other events, to see that at least, you know, parts of Declaration, Constitution, in particular the Bill of Rights, or the First Amendment, if those are right, publicly. And, you know, in the Old Testament, the Bible, that was something that God's people were told to do, they were told to read every year before the people the law, and I think we need to have that read publicly. There is a level of ignorance and a lack of consideration there, what it means, it's true that you can safely, anybody can say anything they want, obviously there's consequences. But to have so many people across every profession, every walk of life, every race group, believe in this country that it's okay to kill someone because you disagree with them, I find that despicable, I find it abhorrent, and I find it an anthem to the very tradition of our founding fathers, and we, we should certainly say something about that and use our position to do it as much as it is safe to do so. And I pray God's blessings for our leaders, as they hunt down those people who would dare behave that way. That's it.
Thank you, Councilman. My comments, I'll keep them brief, I just wanna start off by, if you haven't had a chance going right up here to the park and taking a look at the refreshed Moon Tree display, Wendy kinda led the effort to get the display redone, really nice quality work, the Public Works team, Beau and the Public Works team came in, overhauled the area, put a nice brick walking area down, a bench down there for folks to sit down, it looks absolutely amazing. Not a very cost intensive effort, but it certainly does add to the quality of our, our theme park area here, so Wendy, thank you to the entire team, and I'll just lead into that second part, which is, we are getting a lot done in the city, that is because the city council has supported the hiring of quality staff, and now through this budget, the proposed budget continues to support that, and we have good quality folks throughout the entire organization that are coming to work every day, and going home tired, but I think it shows, and I really appreciate that. I've received quite a lot of positive comments about our efforts and my efforts, it is all because the staff is on the ground and getting things done day to day. And so, anytime you have an opportunity, if you see them out there, the team out there, Mo and I try and pull off and hop out and just say hello to them, I'm sure they would appreciate it if they ever saw you, just do it safely on the side of the road, or catch them, I'm sure they would appreciate that opportunity, or if any of the members of the public are seeing our very hot and sweaty guys running around in pumpkin orange, high visibility orange, give them a thumbs up, honk the horn, or just go shake their hand, though it may be a sweaty hand, they certainly deserve it because they're keeping the streets looking very, very nice, and inviting for the city Keystone Heights. That's all I have, Rich?
Your report. This time, Mr. Vice...